Meeting of the Prairie View City Council will now come to order at 6:01 PM. Ms. Johnson, which is your father's quarters?
Councilwoman Owen.
Present.
Councilwoman Randall.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Williams, there. Councilwoman Miles.
Thank you ma'am. And if we could stand for the invocation of the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Burrow, if you would be so kind as to lead us in a short invocation this evening.
Dear Master, it is at this time and this day that we come giving thanks to you for allowing us one more day here. We thank you for your mercy, we thank you for your goodness. There are so many things, Lord, that we just can't name them all, that we come thanking you. We ask that you conduct this, have this meeting conducted where we all can be on one accord. We ask the blessings of each and every one that is present here today. All these blessings we ask in our son Jesus' name, amen.
And if we had the, uh, pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may you see that. Our first presentation is by Dr. Audrey Salls, sharing some information on, uh, some work that she started to get information to help the seniors in our city. Dr. Salls?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I feel a movement in here this evening. Good evening. My name is Dr. Audrey Salls, I am a community activist, I am a community leader, and I've been helping people, the seniors, the homeless, uh, for about thirty years. And I've been coming to Prairie View for twenty-one years. And I've been driving around and seeing the need, seeking the need of the people, starting with the adults here in Prairie View. So I've already talked to some people, the USDA and other housing, about getting fundings to help repair the houses. You can, uh, just repair the houses, tear the houses down and rebuild it according to the city ordinance, but once I get the information, USDA was supposed to have met me here today, but unfortunately she wasn't able to make it, but I apologize for that. But the next meeting, I, I hope to have some information for y'all. But let me tell you, I come from a family of eighteen, my mom and dad had eighteen children. My oldest brothers and sisters, uh, brothers came to Prairie View. A lot of my family members came to Prairie View. So the seed has been sown. I came back, I'm here to eat the good of the land. I'm here to help in any way that I can to help the people here in Prairie View. And I see a movement here, and we get together, get on one accord, I'll be back and forth and, and traveling, but I'll be back because I know that God has, has sent me to do this mission in this season. So again, look for information, it'll be coming later, I didn't get a chance to get it, uh, mayor, but, um, I'll get some information to y'all. And then there is, there was some more information that was at the city hall about housing and repairing the housing that I read over, I didn't quite understand, but I will be getting, uh, meeting with the people to give me more clarity about those programs, okay? All right, thank you mayor.
Thank you ma'am. Our next item is Bureau Veritas, our building official. Ms. Rogers? And if you would, just for the benefit of the, the audience and the record, if you tell them who you're with and what Bureau Veritas has been doing.
I'm with Bureau Veritas, we're a very large, uh, company, we do a lot of inspections, whether it's construction, tanks, uh, medical, chemical, health and safety, all different types of containers, cargoes, all different, all different types of things. I've been with Bureau Veritas for almost three years now. Uh, I started with Bureau Veritas back in two thousand and five when I was a building official for the city of Willis. I, I did not have my plumbing license at that time, I do have it now. Uh, so municipalities are regulated by the state plumbing board, and state plumbing board regulates that only a licensed, a state licensed plumbing inspector can do any inspections on plumbing. Well, that's how I found Bureau Veritas. Uh, so Bureau Veritas came to Willis and started out, and that actually created the Houston, Houston Business Unit. They didn't have one before then. So, I mean, I've been with Bureau Veritas, deal with Bureau Veritas, on the city side of it started out and then went to work for them, and actually the inspector that would come out and do my inspections ended up being my supervisor before he retired two years ago. The Houston Business Unit consists, there are four inspectors, there's me and a string of the guys, and we have one that's a backup inspector. Uh, we have a Sanitone-Austin area unit, and then we've got a coastal, and that is just for the south, uh, southeast region. Uh, there's Dallas-Fort Worth region, we're, we're international. Bureau Veritas has over eighty thousand employees. Um, I can't remember, eighteen hundred something got established, I really can't remember, I'd have to go back and look at my stuff.
Yeah, that's in sixty countries.
Yeah. Uh, but anyway, we have been, I personally have been here with Prairie View for two and a half years. Uh, we've got, like I said, we've got other guys, like, in case I happen to be in class or happen to be out somewhere else or happen to actually get a day off, there's another inspector that can come up and fit and fill out. Uh, right now Chris Haver pretty much takes care of Prairie View right now because he comes out of College Station, so he's, he's closer than I come out of Cleveland. But, and Chris was gonna be here tonight, but his kids just had a livestock show and they played, so they're at auction tonight. Uh, anyway, we are going, we are proposing to be the building official for the city of Prairie View, which is the direction that we have been received from the mayor and from council. I know section, chapter one, section one oh four is the building official, that's the exact title, duties and powers of a building official. I know the city tonight is looking at, uh, rearranging, uh, section one oh four, uh, amending it, so I want to keep it to the smaller one, I'll just go over pinpoints of what we are proposing. City of Prairie View Building Department Administration. Bureau Veritas Director of Inspection, South Texas Business Unit area, will be designated as a building official of the city of Prairie View and will oversee the building, the city building department administration. All interpretations and decisions will be made by the building official and the city mayor. Bureau Veritas to provide the following services. Permit-related documents for public information and application. Process applicant inquiries and notifications regarding city zoning, ordinance, permit fees, seminal documents and permitting. And I know the cities, I know the zoning is becoming a, a pretty big topic right now. Ensure valid contractor licensing and liability insurance. Processing of permits to include coordination with city departments and consultants. On-site plan review of small residential and commercial projects. A lot of times we'll have some of these smaller projects, they come in, they've got an idea and they, they permit the scope, they do a drawing and they permit this. Sometimes on some small, uh, projects and stuff like that, we can do field, uh, inspections and be able to make field adjustments as long as they're not by an engineer or anything like that. Uh, for that, you would have to go back to an engineer if that engineer's still on those plans. Permit tracking, data entry of permit information and task management system, which is TMS system, which is a system that we use for all of our tracking. Issuing of permits and certificate of occupancy. Inspections of residential and commercial projects. Certificate of occupancy zoning review and inspections. Monthly status reports to the city. Conduct follow-up investigations on inactive permits. Attend city council, city department and pre-construction meetings when applicable to scope. Substantial housing program inspections only. Assessment and interpretation of city adopted building codes. Monitor state building regulations and recommendations. Conduct builder meetings. Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Excuse my pardon. Um, could you read, uh, I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. I think it was, uh, with the approval of you guys, and it says, and the mayor, could you read that line again?
All interpretation and discussions will be made by the building official and the city mayor. What, what I mean in that statement is, we are here to, uh, interpret and advise the city on what actually happens, uh, on what our recommendations are as far as that point. There again, this was given to me for another city, which if y'all are making that determination that you're trying to take it out of the mayor's hands, we really always, uh, he, he looks to us for advice, and we look to the city to be able to, you know, give that advice and to make sure that we're, you know, following, the city's wants, the police department's wants and different stuff like that. So that's why that is in that city, that is in this statement, it may not be applicable here. That's gonna, that's gonna be all in the direction of the council and the mayor.
Do you, well, two things. One, can we get a copy of the document in which you, we mentioned in the contract of the services that you're gonna provide? Because we haven't, uh, those reports are reports that goes to the mayor as far as process, so because you're our building, is it building official?
Mm-hmm.
It's the title, but you also do some other work for us, how will that be segregated and how, um, how is that like compartmentalized or is just, is it one and the same? Because we use you for inspection services as well, so can you?
Right. I will have to get that information from Greg. He, unfortunately, he's in New Mexico, he was planning on being here also, but he had to fly out this one, and we've got another project, big project going in New Mexico. And, uh, all that hasn't been quite established yet, just like I was talking to the mayor earlier, we're talking about looking at, I don't know how much time y'all needed us here, whether it be one day a week, two days a week, five days a week, four hours a day, eight hours a day. What the mayor has, uh, advised, what we're looking into as far as y'all's, uh, fees, is two days a week, possibly Tuesday and Thursday, four hours a day to start.
I have my, I have a second, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, billing, so, um, as our building official, if I'm understanding the process, this is before a certificate is issued, correct?
Oh, yes, sir.
I, as a person, if you're verifying my occupancy, I pay a fee for that, is that correct? Well, I mean, not, not to you, but to the city. For me to get a certificate of occupancy, we are charged a fee.
Yes. After the permit fee, then the certificate fee, yes?
In this fee, is this fee sustained, can, can this fee or this fund sustain the, this, this position that we're gonna bring on, whether it be the four hours or however long in reference to making, um, not running over as far as, how, how are we set up to kindly bill that, or have we negotiated any of the contracts yet?
Uh, no, actually, we're waiting on the final actual fees, uh, and as she said, we weren't able to reach Greg this evening, and as those come back, and we may need to take a look and reevaluate our certificate of occupancy fees because they are very low, but, um, so yeah, that is, I mean, it's a great question, but we'll have to take a look at what they're charging and see what, uh, is normal reasonable for upgrading our fees to, to, uh, cover that. Yes, councilor?
Uh, thank you for coming, first of all. My question is, I kind of directed toward JJ. When we look at how the budget is going to be delineated from here, or is this gonna be a separate line item or is it gonna be under, just under Bureau Veritas?
Separate line.
It's gonna be a sep- separate line?
Yeah, permanent inspection.
Permanent inspection?
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
And they're basically the only ones who, we, uh, have a permanent inspection.
So the city, I guess, kind of thinking that the city would be more of a pass through, right? As far as the money coming in to us?
Well, yeah, right, exactly, because, uh, you're absolutely right. You, you see, uh, permit revenue, then you see permanent inspection.
Right, so the money coming in, there's money going out as well.
So we just gotta make sure that our fees balance off with the charge per...
Right, exactly, right.
The second question, with what you're currently doing, um, in cities like West, um, y'all, y'all, Bureau Veritas does the city of West, uh, thirty-five, uh, or some of the smaller cities. How do you, how do you update them? How do you read, you know, how is that relationship in reference to communication?
I guess I don't understand the question.
So, so like, would you, like, so the, the mayor may say, we have five inspections that need to go out in reference to certificate of occupancy. Bureau Veritas also may be doing, um, doing the construction piece, the construction inspections, mechanical plumbing, that type of work too. Do we receive a monthly report like we do with some of our other contractors, USW? Some of the other contractors give us a monthly report?
Right, that's, that's part of this, uh, thing is, is a monthly report.
Okay, so to that, but, but, okay, that's just for, you're saying the monthly report, are we reviewing the entire contract or is this just a monthly report for inspection? Because Bureau Veritas also does our inspections for mechanical plumbing and any new construction. And so the question is, uh, we should have been receiving reports, and so I'm simply saying, are we saying we're gonna get monthly reports from, from both sides, kind of as far as like, you know, a process?
Okay. In the TMS system, which the ladies in the front office have access to, there's a monthly report in the DMS system.
TMS.
Yes, sir, that can be, that can be pulled down. Uh, this paperwork here is to say that whatever person is gonna be designated onsite, whether it's four hours a day, eight hours a day, or whatever, will be responsible for generating those reports and getting them to y'all, not just for the ladies up front being able to pull the report.
So, how, how long have we been able to pull this report from TMS?
As long as they've had TMS.
So, on the, on, as long as we had TMS, all of the documents on TMS are, are currently up to date?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
So, uh, so if, if, if that's the case, why, why previously in the past we've missed documents, um, from our building inspections and things of that sort?
I guess I don't understand the question, what documents have been missed?
So, uh, so we can go into this system and see a monthly report, what, what's all existed in this monthly report?
Uh, you can break it down in different ways, you can get all your inspections, uh, however many building finals you've had that month. Uh, it pulls by address and it'll tell you what all inspections were done, whether it's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and should also give you the status report. Also the ladies, every...
No, no, we, we're not laughing at you, it's just that, uh, in the, in the, in the past, we've asked for information, and, uh, we missed information as far as, uh, building inspections, what all was checked off, uh, on different buildings, uh, the code, the plumbing, um, still to this day, we're still, um, looking for that information from one project, and so we asking, if TMS gives us a monthly report, then how is information missing, uh, from those reports?
That I don't know.
Technically, we don't know if the information is missing.
It's missing.
We just haven't been able to see.
We haven't been able to, we haven't, we haven't had access to.
The information to better answer maybe councilor's questions is the ladies up front may or may not, because all these computer programs and, and the workload, and the fact that these reports exist is new to me, so if that's your question, that's my answer. Um, we've got a lot of technology, and I admittedly am not good at all of it, but I'll also say this, the very reason we've got Ms. Rogers and the council voted to, um, add Bureau Veritas as our building official is to have people with these various knowledge and backgrounds and expertise overseeing this process. So you're hearing this from someone who knows the system, who's been using the system as long as, uh, she's been working with Bureau Veritas. So that's why we're, we're, that's why she's here and that's why she's been, uh, they're being contracted to handle this.
Yeah. And the ladies up front, I know there's been a little bit of a changeover, you know, throughout the time, uh, they may not properly know how to pull those reports.
So, two things, um, because, because we've, we've been using Bureau Veritas for some time on one side. We've approved, we've approved to have Bureau Veritas come in as our official building inspector, so now we'll be having you for two things, and you were saying that we'll be able to get the monthly reports. What do we need to do to make sure that frontline staff, um, and the mayor, or, I mean, I'm pretty sure he can schedule that, but what do, do we need to do anything outside of having them get a training? Because what we wanna, the goal is just like every other report, we wanna be able to look at these reports to say, for the month of February that just ended, we should be able to see a report, the mayor should be able to tell us that we had ten inspections, final inspections, we have five this and five this, and then the next month, the ones that was the five should move over and now we, and that closes out. And so, uh, we're just, again, um, it's the first time for us hearing this, and so we're just trying to kind of like rationalize all this together, this, to, to better make sure that we're asking the correct questions in reference to moving forward and, and the city of Prairie View relationship with your organization. And so, um, the information that you provided was, I think we need to make sure that, um, city staff gets the, the proper supports for us to be able to pull these records because it's gonna be very, it's important that we have this information.
Great. And we also went, um, elec- one hundred percent electronic, y'all were getting written, uh, written inspection reports, and since we went electronic October, last October, October a year ago, so it's been on like a year and a half now, um, the, they, well, some of the email glitches that happened sometimes, they wouldn't get a report, and we can always go back in TMS and pull a report, but at four oh two, uh, daily, if we've been to Prairie View and done an inspection in Prairie View, uh, an inspection report is generated and sent out from a server in electronic email.
So, I guess, just a question to follow up on councilor's question, is what can we do, or what system do y'all have in place to ensure that our city staff as well as our mayor, because the mayor said, I mean, not knowing, I mean, not knowing that there is, is an issue, so how can we be sure that we can get them trained on how to, on how to get to those courses of access, though? Do y'all have a training system in place, or is it as simple as, you know, go to this website, can we, we just want to be sure that when we leave for today, that we know going forward, that Bureau Veritas has to come, come and then perform some sort of training for our city staff and our mayor who have, who have a need day-to-day access to this information?
Right. That can be corrected, typically it's done on an implementation, so whenever we, we would have first started, we would come out and train, but like you said, there's been staff turnover.
Right.
Uh, and it's just, you know, not knowing the next person, not knowing, you know, they, they know what to pull and what they don't know what to pull. As I know, whenever I first started here, we were going over, uh, quite a few things. I didn't know y'all needed, uh, to print out a monthly report. You know, that...
Even if you're not necessarily printing them out, um, from what I'm hearing, uh, the mayor, we didn't even know we had access to, so we need to know how to get at least access.
Okay.
If the mayor wants to go and look and see what, what's going on on the report, you know, he should, he should be able to go to his desk and pull it up on the computer and not have to call, you know, Bureau Veritas.
Access is just, access is given to a certain number of people, like the ladies up front.
Right.
And then going in, pull that, and pull that report, as you're given, uh, you're given a city login and you're given a password.
Right.
Um, and it stays, and the only one, I can see all the cities, y'all only be, gonna be able to see Prairie View.
Right.
And that's just, like I said, I haven't been asked to provide a report, or I would, you know, I would have done this if it was asked to help y'all.
Will the, will the person, I'm sorry, council, will the person that's gonna be here, say Tuesday, Thursday, four hours, will they know how to pull and access these reports?
If they don't go find out.
Okay. Then, uh, then that can be, I think, an answer to, to your question, will we have someone here like that to help us, since it's just been just about a year and a half and...
Right. And then also, uh, you know, a lot of times coming in, if the ladies ask me a question, I'll stop and help them, unless they hadn't been asked that question, but, you know, I, you know, that's, we're here to help.
Sure, sure. Counselor Young?
Uh, so my, my next question would be, yeah, I'm grateful that you guys are coming on board to help, uh, feel as though this is something that we really need moving our city forward. Uh, so since we didn't know about this system, is there any kind of possible way that, uh, when you guys do come on board, that you guys start with the previous, uh, the previous inspections to make sure everything is passed and, uh, meet codes and standards and are supposed to be given a certificate of occupancy or change some temporary certificates over?
It depends on what stage they're in, on, on previous inspections, because if something's covered, you know, we, we can't see what was behind that wall. It, it's all gonna depend on what stage that it's in.
So, like, similar, we, we are, we're, sorry. I think what council is asking, so we're, we are moved forward and, we haven't had the building, kind of code inspection, a person, so this is for existing structures, we had an oper- we had, uh, I guess recently there was Flowchem, I think, which was one of the companies that we looked at, they've been here for some time, we went back. Would, would not your, the current hat you're, you're wearing with the organization, but the new hat that we're trying to move as far as building inspection, if we're, if the, so, we may say, we, you know, for this month, there are four businesses or whatever that you're gonna go out and do, or that needs to be inspected, are, are we gonna go back and, because there's some people who may have certificate of occupancy currently that may not have done what they said, that, so there was, you know, may not have done what they said, like one entity said they had put in sprinklers, and it wasn't until we went back two years later and found out that it wasn't, it wasn't done, right? And so we had to shut them down, and so the question is, would we approve in the plans?
Mm-hmm.
As our building kind of inspector, we, we're, we're saying, is that the role as far as, um, just to make sure, you know, uh, buildings are up to code or, or up to what they said that they...
Right, well, if they're, if they're existing buildings, we can go in and do a code compliance inspection, and pretty much what that does is it checks for life safety issues. Uh, and going back in, in this one, you said about they were supposed to put in sprinklers and didn't. Um, I don't know how that happens, but I do know there, we have a whole separate fire division, uh, as long as that's the direction we are given. There have been some of them, I know that y'all have a, a local, uh, fire inspector, uh, Mr. Bordeaux, and, uh, he's gone out and done some of them.
And I, I'm sorry. Go ahead. And I don't, I, so we have a lot of questions about process, I don't know, you know, now is the time for us to have this discussion? I think a, a workshop would be essential, because we, we really would love to understand the process, so when we're walking down the street and somebody says, hey, I want to, you know, do X, Y, and Z within the community, we can tell them, hey, this is the process. I don't think, I don't think we, as a council, have a clear understanding, since, since, you know, you know, Bureau Veritas, and like, this is our first time having a building structure, we would like to understand what the process is and what that process looks like going forward, so if we could, uh, get together at some point in the future and just have a workshop where we can just, you know, iron out the time, because, you know, we don't want to, you know, spend, you know, the entire time discussing this, because we could ask questions for that, but if, if you could, you know, prepare a presentation for us and we could have a, a workshop.
A workshop would be a very good idea. What I would, what I would like to get from y'all on that is if y'all have any specific questions, uh, some concerns in areas like that, that would help us put a workshop together better.
Absolutely. It's, uh, I guess the best way to do that is if you could leave us with your email.
Okay.
An email of questions that's gonna come?
Sure. Well, uh, in the email, could you send a, could you propose some dates in which you could come back and so that way the mayor could get with council and see what day works best to have a workshop?
Yeah, he'll send me an email, I'll forward it to all the council, and then we can take a look and see which of the dates are better. Uh, we've got, we have an item that has been, uh, requested. Uh, counselor? We've got an item eleven that relates directly to, uh, Ms. Rogers, and Ms. Rogers also happens to have, uh, knowledge on it. Would there be an issue, uh, if it be the will of council to move it up now so that Ms. Rogers can hear and possibly advise on an existing issue?
Um, that's not inappropriate, but I would say that if item ten is passed, then item eleven goes away and it goes back to the mayor's discretion, so it's, it's the will of the council either way, but number eleven would not exist once that moratorium is lifted, for, for city council approval.
No, item, item... No, item, item eleven is on an existing problem.
I understand.
It's not, not to do with the moratorium in and of itself.
Yeah, they currently have certificate of occupancy already.
No, actually, they don't.
Right, so what I'm saying is, if the moratorium is lifted, whether or not they get a certificate of occupancy would not be the decision of the city council.
Right, but?
Right now, it still is, so if you move it forward, it would still be appropriate.
Yeah, okay.
And that's up to the will of the council.
We've got, uh, several people who want to speak to this issue, and I want the council to be aware of what's going on, because it's something that's, uh, starting to happen throughout the city, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. I know if we go on and the moratorium is lifted, then, uh, we'd have to go back and bring it in front. I want you to be aware of, uh, this particular situation, because I think it's, uh, problematic and you need to know. Yes, could we move that out for citizens? Uh, I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, if Ms. Rogers doesn't mind, those couple of minutes for citizen comments.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Council, can we get a motion?
I'm making that for citizens.
Okay, all right, next we have citizen comments, uh, Ron Lever.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilor.
With the light on, there you go.
Thank you. Yes, good afternoon. I think about, um, three months ago, uh, I heard the city council approved, uh, funds through, uh, Mr. Johnson, JJ Johnson, the, uh, said that to the council that there were funds available for streetlights. And there was approximately, uh, the, uh, got what the, what the figure was. And I had requested, and we had talked about streetlights and installation of streetlights. Uh, I think you remember Mr. Mayor, you came in with, uh, Sam Bernard, and you posted, suggested, uh, staked out a particular streetlight on a hightower street. Uh, this was, uh, it, I thought it was, it was ready to be done, uh, the funds were identified. But the project, after three months still, the project has not taken place. I talked with Sam Bernard, uh, I think that Sam Bernard basically said it's, for whatever reason, I guess it's up to you to direct him to, uh, install a code, install a light. Uh, if the funds are available, and the council has approved it, I'm wondering what's the holdup? I realize you can't, you're not, you're not, uh, in a position to answer me tonight. But I, I think after three months, uh, this is long overdue, especially when other lights in the city are being installed. And I think that, uh, with the situation of hightower, the?